We'll go ahead and get started on today's meeting, October 27th, 2025. If you would mind, please rise, and Councilmember Adam Kraft will lead us into prayer and pledge.
Lord, I want to start off this evening, excuse me, by thanking you. Thank you for your blessing, thank you for your oversight of our health, our happiness, of all of our family and friends. We truly appreciate your guidance in the part of our lives that you bring and that goes on our lives. Calling special request tonight, Lord, if I could call your special request to give some selfless attention to the city of Fairfield, specifically within our fire department, our police department, as well as our schools, looking over our teachers and our students, and all of the children that we have living in our community, be forever grateful. We ask this in the name of your order, amen.
...... United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as a prior.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kraft? All right, roll call, please, for the clerk.
Councilmember Kraft?
Here.
Councilmember Myers?
Here.
Councilmember Davidson? Councilmember Brill? Councilmember Bessel? Councilmember Paulus?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Davidson and Councilmember Bessel.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. All right, citizen comments. What the hell, I mean, I passed up a couple things. Here I am, looking down. Are there any agenda modifications before us? No, we'll let them stand as read, I'm sorry. Is there an executive session request this evening?
Yes, there is, to consider confidential information related to the marketing plans, specific business strategy, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance, negotiations with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to hold executive session per city manager's recommendation. Motion second. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Yes.
Councilmember Brill? Councilmember Paulus?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Now we'll move to special presentations. Mr. Mike, you're welcome to come up and tell us what you're all about. Yep, here you go. Have you tested it before yet?
Uh, I haven't.
Okay. Can somebody?
Just right there.
Oh, is it right there? Okay.
Uh, likely, I'll take it.
Yeah.
Hey, Jason, we're gonna have a flash drive.
Thank you, Mayor Rotis, and members of council. My name is Mike Hogan, I'm the Chief Advancement Officer for Meals on Wheels of Southwest Ohio, Kentucky. It is my privilege to be here and share just a little bit of what we do, and who we are, and how we're serving the citizens of Fairfield. You know, I think a lot of folks know Meals on Wheels by name, and the old joke is that if you've seen one Meals on Wheels, you've seen one Meals on Wheels. We are a national organization. We are based in Washington DC. Our national office is in Arlington, Virginia, right across from DCA. Our Meals on Wheels in DC in that office is not delivering meals to Dupont Circle. There are over 5,000 individual Meals on Wheels organizations in the United States, of which we are among the five largest right here in the greater Cincinnati and Northern Kentucky area. We serve roughly over 10,000 clients every year. Our core function, of course, our home-delivered meals. We serve about 7,500 of our clients over a 13-county. As we'll see in just a second, is there?
I'll give you a little.
Maybe.
Jason, is the... There we go. You had to hold your tongue right.
As I shared, we serve 13-county radius, five counties in Ohio, and eight counties down in Northern Kentucky. Our primary service, of course, is the home-delivered meals program. In addition to our home-delivered meal clients of about 7,500 that receive five to seven meals per week from our drivers, we also have a very robust social service program. This is actually one thing that I like to speak about the most. We have over 20 licensed social workers on our staff that handle over 200 cases every year. These cases of which we are, in many cases, the primary financial arm for the individuals. We're receiving directly their social security, their retirements, their pensions come right through our organization. We then are able to pay out and ensure that their mortgages are paid, their rents paid, utilities, et cetera. We extend these services all the way up to and including legal guardianship. Right now, in fact, we hold about 10 legal guardianship cases on our staff. We have a pretty robust transportation program, in part largely due to funding in both states, Ohio and Kentucky. We also recently just received a very generous grant from the Ford Motor Company as well. These transportation services provide over 40,000 individual trips per year. These are trips to the grocery store, to the doctor's office, to social outings, any variety of ways to get around for our seniors. In addition to that, we do have a very robust health and wellness program. This includes getting our seniors and our clients out to events throughout the community. These are field trips to the art museum, they were recently down at Artworks. We recently held a class where they all got together for coffee at a coffee shop and learned about iPhone photography, which I kind of wanted to say to myself, but did not. These are events really designed to help better their daily lives, get them out of the house, get them, give them the opportunity to really interact with one another and gain some friends along the way. We actually do have one of the largest pet programs in the United States. What we found a number of years ago was the meals that we're providing our clients, they were actually rationing those meals to provide for their pets. And as anybody who has cats, dogs knows, eating off the table is probably not the best idea. So we were able to create and provide for in-home pets. We provide about 35,000 pounds of pet food a year for their pets. We understand the importance and the need for seniors who are alone in their homes, and just how important pet care can be for them, and how expensive. We do also have emergency vet service in case they need that as well. We also provide congregate meals to over 24 sites in the greater Cincinnati and Northern Kentucky region. Up here in Butler County, we provide meals, we provide lunch on Fridays to the midpoint library at Union Center Boulevard. These are just a touch of what we get into. And why we're doing this, a little bit about the crisis on aging, and I've tried to get away from using the word crisis on this. There's also another phrase that I really don't like that we hear a lot, and that is the silver tsunami. I don't like that phrase because personally I've been embracing that since my early twenties, unfortunately. However, the reality is that for the first time in US history, the 16 and over population is actually going to outnumber the 18 and under population. Folks are living longer, which is fantastic. Oftentimes, however, they're living well beyond their means and beyond their resources, and it's organizations like ours that are able to promote independence in their homes for themselves and for their families. One of the best services that we provide, and that is in our home-delivered meals, it's not just about providing the meals to the home, it's about the wellness check. It's about, oftentimes, we are the one person that that individual might see that week. And our drivers and our staff are trained to kind of keep an eye on the house and keep an eye on the client and understand kind of what's going on with them. They can see if things are out of sorts, if we need to call other organizations in, if we need to, if they need some help in certain areas, and they just maybe weren't aware of it. We can be there for them, and we can be there for their families as well. So what are we doing in Fairfield? In Fairfield specifically, we serve over 200 clients right here in the city of Fairfield in Butler County. That breaks down into 95 clients in 011, 77 in 014, and 40 clients in 015. As I mentioned, we are very large, we'd love to grow. We know that the need for our services is growing greatly. In April, we embarked on a very large and aggressive $30 million fundraising campaign for our new facility. Very proud to say that we are over $24.5 million raised towards that. This Wednesday, we will be breaking ground on that new facility. It's really a little bit more of a remodel. We are in a facility right now on Radcliffe Drive down in South Fairmont. In all of my years of professional life, I have the best office view I have ever had. It's a panoramic view perched on top of the hill overlooking the city, but I'm not going to get used to it because we're leaving in a year. We are in a facility that's 24,000 square feet. A lot of folks don't realize that we manufacture 99% of the meals that we deliver in-house. We provide all of that, do all of that in our facilities. It's really designed for about 300,000 meals a year. We're doing 1.2 million meals a year out of where we are right now. We're going to be moving into, if you're familiar with the old John Nolan Ford in Columbia Township, right at the intersection of I-71 and the Norwood Lateral at Highland and Ridge. That square footage is going to get us up to 55,000, 56,000 square feet. And what it's really going to do is going to allow us to almost triple our manufacturing, to produce over 3 million meals a year. Now, that doesn't mean that we're going to move in next year and automatically flip the switch and start driving around with a lot more in our vans. What it does mean is that we'll be able to provide more in the community. We'll be able to provide more to organizations that are serving seniors now, that might be outsourcing for their meals. They can work with us on a better opportunity there. We're going to expand our private pay options as well to get into kind of some new spaces and open up a little bit more to the community. So we're very excited about that, very excited about what the future holds. And if I've got about three minutes? Okay. There is a video...
I got this, I'll just whack it.
I know, you're doing it with the camera. I do have a video on this flash drive, if, I don't know if I can access it with this remote.
Is that it? Yes, or you?
No, I'm getting it.
Oh, he's getting it, okay.
The video we're about to show is just kind of a snippet of kind of where we are, where we're going, and the importance of what this all means for the community, especially in communities here in Butler County where we are not quite serving as much as we'd like to.
With Driving Into the Future, we're really trying to address a crisis in aging that's happening in America currently. Nearly one in four Americans is a senior. In the next decade, there will be more seniors than young people 18 and under for the first time in our US history.
We're going to have increasing demand with probably decreasing resources and ability to provide them elsewhere. Meals on Wheels is the perfect, most efficient setup to be able to do that over the long haul. Going into a new facility that will really be built and optimized to provide those kind of services.
I think one of the most powerful things that was said to me during the dark time of my life were four words. It is, "You are not alone." And that is so important, because even though we might feel alone, and we might be in a place where we feel isolated, we're not. And so when someone shows up to your door with a meal and a wellness check to see, "How are you?", that is just a signal that you are not alone. I don't have to say it, you know you're not alone because I'm here.
I'm very happy about the Meals on Wheels. They are always there for me every week, and if I have any complaints, they take care of it. It's always fresh, and the milk, and the bread, everything is wonderful, and the fruit.
Our program props these seniors up safely in their homes where they want to be, so they don't have to leave their home, go to nursing care, or some other supportive living environment.
Maneuvering through the building is really tough, because we have stuff that need to be stored in places that, at the time, we gotta wait. It's a lot of turns, it's a lot of doors to prop open, it's a lot of maneuvering.
Our current building is designed to do 300,000 meals annually. We do 1.2 million. We are at the max. So we have designed this new building from the minute a semi truck hits our dock to the moment that our drivers load their truck and head out to serve our seniors. The new building will allow us to expand capacity, obviously, but also expand opportunities. We can no longer go into new programs or look for new revenue sources. The new building will allow us to do that. It'll allow us to diversify our funding, allow us to go into new areas to help seniors, to provide those essential services that we can't think about now because we just don't have the space to change our production.
The Driving Into the Future campaign will allow our facility really to become a one-stop shop for seniors, and not only seniors, but the caregivers that help provide for them. We want to make it as easy as possible for seniors and those caregivers to have the services or have the access to the services they need to be able to stay independent and in their own homes.
When people think of Meals on Wheels, they think of food. They think about a breakfast or lunch, but they don't know that there are so many other people and so many other things going on. To be able to come in-house and get training or get information, that's another outing for them. An outing that will not only get them now away from the center, but to this magical place called Meals on Wheels and get information, their day is good. It's just good.
We need to judge society by how they care for their elderly. We do that here in Cincinnati and Greater, in Northern Kentucky, and that's why it's so important to support this campaign.
One of the best parts of my job is being able to get out in the community. I focus a lot, obviously, on fundraising, but I also have the opportunity to get out and share the word of who we are and the resources that are available to the seniors in the 13 counties that we serve. Obviously, here in Butler County, of which I am also a resident, thank you for inviting somebody from Liberty Township into your council meeting. Issue one is very important for us, and it is going to remain very important. We're keeping a very close eye on that, but that will, the passage of that levy, of course, will provide significant resources for us to be able to continue doing what we do in the community. So with that, again, I want to thank everybody, if anybody has any questions. I'm free, otherwise?
Any questions, anybody? I met with Mr. Hogan a little, oh, a few weeks ago, and I have to admit, many of these services, I had no idea. Meals on Wheels provided, from veterinarian to the financial part, to the guardianship and the transportation, I just had no idea. So I thought it was interesting, he's not here asking for money, he just, we're all supporting issue one, I think, and he's just wanted, I said, "You know what, I think the rest of council needs to know what all you guys do besides that." So, if nobody else has any questions?
I just want to say thank you for your service, and I have road. And the wellness is a big part of that, because some of those people don't see anybody. And I know a case that happened here in Fairfield, and she fell. If it was that driver, they would have found her dead. And he saved her life. So, that happened right here in Fairfield. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a relative on it, and that person actually came to her funeral, and they knew each other, first-name basis. He was one of their best friends by the time, like you were saying. It's definitely once a week, whatever, so.
It comes like family.
Yep. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any citizen comments tonight? Big crowd out there. All right. Council reports.
Nothing in report? Nothing in what's in it?
I do have one item. The city is getting input on our Safe Streets for All Public Input. And the link is to survey, to get on, to do a survey, can be found on the front page of the city's website and has been posted to the city's Facebook as well. And if you go on the website, there's a tab that says Safe Streets for All Public Input. And then on Facebook, type in Safe Streets for All City of Fairfield, Ohio, and go on there and take the survey. And the deadline for the survey is November the 30th, 2025. So, check that out, go on. Did you want to add anything to that, Ben? So, check that out, because the deadline is November 30th.
Well, I will add, Debbie, they set up a booth at our trunker tree on Halloween, at Village Green, and they got a lot of input from all the people at that event. So that was a good event for them to have, for our consultant and our city engineer were at the event, getting some input.
Thank you, Ben, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Paulus?
No.
Very important. I was going to bring up a topic, and I could be here, it could be later on, I guess I'll go ahead and do it. And I'd like for you all to just give your thoughts, so we have a little bit of direction from staff, or for staff. The city received their first installment of the opioid settlement from the state of Ohio, actually from insurance companies supporting it. And it was something around $370,000. That is sitting in an account now at our city bank, at our, I'm sorry, our city's bank account. And what I was hoping to get some dialogue on and some direction here tonight is, I've looked into it, and some of you hopefully have read some of the emails, that we can put that, a portion of that money, I'm proposing about 350,000 of it, into the Fairfield Community Foundation, at which time it will sit and grow interest. And council, future councils forever will be able to pull on that interest amount, which would be about $17,000 to $22,000 a year. It's not earmarking it for any one group or organization, it's earmarking it for council to spend, to invest, really, in anything that's supporting the movement of drug rehabilitation, to anything to do with that. And there's a list of approved expenditures that the state has put on it. So what I would like is either some open dialogue, or some, just some nods, to give Mr. Timmer the approval to perceive of moving that money over to the community foundation. The reason I say this is I've been in the Ohio Mayor's Alliance and also around the county, there's organizations getting settlements, and they're spending them in the next year or two, and all the money's going to be gone. And I would love to see this last forever and feed off the interest, and when I say forever, it really would be forever. So, having said that, I think I support it, and you know that. Anybody like to comment on this and give some direction? Or, Mr. Timmer, why don't you?
So, I do, at the mayor's request, I had some conversations with the Fairfield Community Foundation. So they do have a couple of different options. There is an endowed fund option, just like the mayor referenced, where they typically have an annual spend calculation of about 5%. The criteria, we could help specify, so the expenditure of funds is guided by the One Ohio memorandum. We would be able to provide them that memorandum verbatim, and they could then design the program directly around that One Ohio memorandum, so that we would be confident in the intended use fits what the allowable uses for that money is. They do have a couple different options for how they would distribute funds. We could endow the money and then turn it over to the community foundation board, so that the community foundation board itself could manage a grant program. If there is an appetite for city council to continue involvement, they can structure it in a way that city council can also participate in that grant program. But what they would likely attempt to do is design a program to allow people to apply and then solicit and show their intended use. They could do that application once, twice a year, and then they would use all of their resources to help promote that to the Fairfield community. So, that was all I gathered, but if you have any questions, I have had multiple conversations with the Fairfield Community Foundation.
You know, I, thank you, Mr. Timmer, I don't have a problem from a process standpoint of going to the Fairfield Community Foundation, but I would want to see somebody from the city manager's office as a board member to create essentially a Fairfield Board that is incorporated into the community foundation, where the city manager at his designee, or her designee, would be able to help manage that and then bring those requests to council. This can get complex very, very quickly. As you know, we had the volunteer, or the program where folks came for money, whether it was YMC or whatever. It gets competitive, it gets sometimes very difficult to make those decisions. I would love to be able to have one person from the city that is a city employee and executive of the city, like Mr. Timmer, that would be able to put that process together and be part of that board, and it brings at the council for allocation of funds. That's my opinion.
Mike, just go ahead and jump in here and be kind of blunt about it ultimately, and, I mean, there's a couple different ways this is done. One would be to just turn it over, the funds over to the foundation and trust their board to consider the factors, and this is directly contradictory to what you just said.
And I would be, I would be completely opposed to this.
Yeah, okay. And I want to make you guys aware, because the two different types of funds that they would envision, I think, would be a fund, which would be what they call a field of interest fund, where the foundation board would do that, take the decision-making out of the hands of council, so that, in essence, council doesn't have to be burdened with the responsibility for making, because ultimately, that's one of the challenges, is, like you just said, it's, if people bring them to the city, it's year in, year out. It's an obligation of this city to make a determination and insert you into the decision-making process. That can be beneficial, because you have control, but it also can become a burden because of the amount of money you're talking about and dedicating resources to on an annual basis. Maybe something that, because we're talking 5% of $350,000, so. That's something that you, as a group, want to make, you know, sure you're satisfied with whatever decision you make, because those are, one is a donor-advised fund where you ultimately do pick and select where those funds are directed, and the other is a field of interest fund where you can have some requirement that a person from the city be in, you know, part of the process without it necessarily having to come back to council for approval. So, think about those.
Go ahead. Because we're down there.
I just think it needs some time.
I'll echo what Congressman Myers has stated, thinking that we need some announcement, although having directed all members to the city, we're worried about those updates to council.
We're missing a couple council members tonight, so I think we need some time.
Yep. Dale? So the, there's really not a, we can't put a member of our staff on their board, the community foundation board. There actually is one, though. We have community members.
I'm on the board.
And you're on the board.
I should disclose that, it doesn't really...
I was just going to say, there's a couple here that are...
I don't know that it changes anything.
But you could definitely do the advisory fund, where we advise them, they come to us.
They come, yeah, we ultimately make the selection.
Yeah. So it would still come back to us, and I agree, Councilmember Mars, I fully intended going back to the future councils for their decision each year, so, and it is only 17,000 to 22,000 or 20,000, it's not like it's hundreds. Let me clarify something to Steve. And I'm not envisioning that every single decision comes before council. The reason I said Mr. Timmer would be involved, or somebody from his office would be involved, because they would sort through that process, create that list, a shortlist, and then bring it to council with a strong recommendation for how those funds are distributed. That's my intent on that, which I don't think is very labor-intensive at all for council.
Yeah, for my purposes, at some point, we'll be drafting some kind of an agreement, and I'll need to know what it should say.
I understand, yeah. And that's exactly where I was going with it, so. I'm envisioning a once-a-year opportunity for these people, the organizations to apply for it, more or less, come to council, come to staff, and be presented to council, and the council decides. So, once a year, I would think, so. Okay, well, I'll leave that as just an open debate. If you guys can get with Mr. Timmer on your thoughts, and then he'll know whether to write the legislation up at the next meeting with the proper language, et cetera. Okay. Let's see here. No public hearing, with no objections to the approval of the minutes of the preceding meeting on October 14th. We'll let them stand as read, and moving to old business. All right. Development Services, Councilmember Kraft, old business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance two.
Before you start that, I make a motion to read Old Business by title. Oh, yeah?
We're not at Old Business.
We're still at Old Business.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
You were sitting next to her.
I like where your mind's at, though.
I'll let you hold that.
Oh, that's funny. She's over there looking at you like, "Dale." I'm talking about, never mind. Oh. No, 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 I was making fun of Leslie, looking over at you, so. All righty, go ahead. So, all righty, go ahead, Mr. Kraft.
Thank you, sir. I have an ordinance to amend various sections of planning and zoning code of ordinance number 166-84, the codified in ordinance of Fairfield. This is going to be placed on hold for the second reading pending planning commission's recommendation. It was drawn up this last week from what the update I received is. And planning commission has it. We're waiting on a signature from Ms. Rolabski and the recommendation from the planning commission and we can move forward. That's all I have, sir.
All right, cool. Now, Mr. Pauls?
Now I make the motion to read all new business by title.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. New Business Development Services, Mr. Timmer.
We have one ordinance tonight for Development Services. This ordinance is related to the execution of a community reinvestment area agreement. Development Specialist Eva Joseph will present tonight on this topic.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate being with you here tonight to highlight a new economic development project. Image Solutions plans to locate a new facility in the city located at Port Union Road. Image Solutions is a custom branded apparel and merchandise company headquartered in Long Beach, California. The company currently has a local operation in West Chester Township, which will be relocated to Fairfield along with 32 existing employees. The company proposes acquiring a 50,000 square foot building located on 9.7 acres at 3750 Port Union Road. Image Solutions proposes to renovate the building and construct in addition, measuring approximately 50,000 square feet, doubling the building footprint. The existing building was constructed in 2024 without tax abatement and Image Solutions will be the first occupant. The project represents a more than $5.9 million investment in Fairfield. The company also estimates investment of 117,000 in new machinery, equipment, furniture, and fixtures. In addition to retaining the 32 employees, Image Solutions plans to hire an additional 12 new employees within three years of project completion. Anticipated future payroll is expected to exceed 2.75 million annually. To facilitate this expansion, Image Solutions is requesting a community revitalization area, or CRA, tax abatement. Based on our tax incentive guidelines, we are recommending a 100% four-year abatement on the assessed value of the building and expansion. The abatement only applies to the value of the new addition and renovations to the existing building. Typically, our guidelines do not provide for an abatement percentage as high as 100%, but we are recommending 100% in this instance because the existing building is not abated. When you calculate the abatement across the entire property, the percentage is lower than 50% in line with our guidelines. Image Solutions has agreed to make annual payments to partially compensate the Fairfield City School District and Butler Tech during the abatement period. The Board of Education of the Fairfield City School District approved this payment as part of the school compensation agreement on October 16th. Approval of this item on tonight's Development Services agenda authorizes the city manager to execute agreements to facilitate the proposed tax abatement. And with that, I would like to introduce Alana Owens, Director of Operations and Process Excellence with Image Solutions. Alana will provide additional details on the company and project and can answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I, again, my name is Alana Owens. I'm the Director of Operations and Process Excellence for Image Solutions. I've been with Image Solutions 13 and a half years. As she said, that we are headquartered in California. And I was actually employee one when we moved here to Ohio. I can tell you, I'm super excited that we are actually planning hard routes in Fairfield because I have moved four times in 13 years. This would be my fifth move. We don't plan to move again, so we're very excited. All of our team members live in this area, so it's great for them. And we've, they have a lot of tenure and really excited for Fairfield just because of the talent, the culture that's here. And also too, it's a great place to be because you can ship 70% of our products within the United States within two to three business days. What, our mission is make you look and feel great at work. And not only, I believe wholeheartedly in that, not only do we believe in that mission for our customers, but also our team members. So this will be great for a new facility that they will feel like that. Another thing I'm really proud of with Image Solutions, we give 10% of our profits back to the community. I serve on a board for the Ion Center and we offer volunteer days. And actually, our team members are the ones that decide where we give that money. We have a thing that's actually coming up called the Giving Tank. And the team members get to do a five minute presentation and they could vote on anything, pets, you know, Meals on Wheels, veterans, whatever it may be. And then we give that money with. We also, a couple of years ago, we partnered with the Boys and Girls Club over in Westchester and we did a volunteer event there. So you can see it's just, it's perfect for us to be here. And looking forward to growing. My job full time will be the next few months is getting there. We broke ground a couple of weeks ago. And that's about Image Solutions. So really, thank you for the opportunity and having us be a part of Fairfield.
Question for you.
Yes.
Is it 12 employees or 32 full time?
32 full time employees.
Plus another 12?
Correct.
Okay. And that 12 you'll hire next year?
Within three years.
Within three years.
Now, it's based off of some of our large customers that we serve. So we do custom brand uniforms. So you know how your jacket there is embroidered. One of our biggest customers, have you ever been to a Discount Tire? When you walk in and you see their clothes, we do that concept to design, to manufacturing, and our facility is distributing. So we are doing the pick, pack, and ship. So when you walk in a Discount Tire, we embroider, we'll be in the Fairfield new building, every name that's on that. So that's over 250,000 employees. We also have Enterprise, Burger King, and some of the other customers. Now, that employee count will increase as our business increases as well. So if we get X amount of more customers, then, you know, that could double or triple.
Thank you. With your current growth strategy, when do you foresee needing to add on additional horsepads to that building?
We are hoping that we don't have to because of some automation that we'd like to do.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're going from about 40,000 to 100,000 square feet or something like that after the construction?
50,000 to 100, yes.
50 to 100. Good for you. Sweet. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Yeah, glad you picked Fairfield.
Yes, thank you for your time.
Thank you. We love it when people come from Westchester to Fairfield.
They don't, but we do.
Yeah. All right. Let me see here. Councilmember Kraft.
Thank you, sir. I have an ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute a community reinvestment area agreement and a community reinvestment area school compensation agreement, which will provide property tax incentives for Image Solutions Apparel Incorporated to include an expansion to its campus by means of renovating and enlarging an existing building on Port Union Road and declaring an emergency. I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third readings, please.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
And motion for adoption.
Second. Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Nope. Motion carried. Thought I heard one.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
That's all I have.
Thank you. All righty, under public safety, Mr. Timmer.
We have three ordinances tonight for public safety. The first ordinance is to adopt the 2025 Emergency Operations Plan. This revision was a complete overhaul of the previous edition. The revision better aligns with the emergency management operations at the county, state, and federal level. The second ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute the Firehouse Subs Grant Application and Agreement for Fire Safety Education Materials. The grant for approximately $7,700 will be utilized to engage the community on various fire safety topics and will be portable. The third ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for indigent legal representation for 2026 in the Fairfield Municipal Court. Thank you.
All right. Public safety, Councilmember Pauls.
Yes, I have an ordinance to adopt the 2025 Emergency Operations Plan for the city of Fairfield and let it stand for the first read.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Pauls? So who owns this plan for Fairfield?
Chief LeCamp.
Okay, so Tom, question for you. I read through the information. There was one component of it, and help me if I'm wrong. One of the appendices said threat and risk matrix or threat and risk assessment. It looked like it came from Butler County. It was their ranking. Do we have something similar to that?
So that was from them. They do a THIRA every year, a threat and hazard assessment. Actually, it's not every year, it's every three to five years. And we participated in that. And that, those are the, those are the risks for Fairfield that I got out of their plan.
Okay, and we agree with that. The only thing I bring up, we have a rail spur that cuts right through the city. And I keep going back to, what was it called? East Palestine in 2024? If we have any similar risks like that? I didn't see any of that in the plan.
So it's an all hazards plan? So it would address a hazardous material spill, a tornado. It is not disaster specific. We would manage it pretty much the same with, within the plan itself. And we would split out hazardous materials as part of that plan.
Okay, so we're prepared.
We are prepared.
All right, thank you. That's all I have. All righty.
Second ordinance is to authorize the city manager to execute the Firehouse Subs Grant Application and Agreement for Porable Fire Safety Education Prop and declaring it an emergency. Make a motion to suspend second and third reading.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
Motion for adoption.
Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? Anything I was going to think when I was reading it, I thought Firehouse Subs was another substation like Panera or, you know, another sandwich shop. And I got reading that, wait a minute.
Was it a steakhouse?
Yeah, it's not a steakhouse either. Thanks, Dale. All right. It's a cool name for one. All right. All in favor?
Next ordinance is authorized.
We have to adopt it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, all opposed. Motion carried.
The other ordinance is authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for indigent legal presentation for 2026 in the Fairfield Municipal Court with the Butler County Public Defender Commission and the Butler County Board of Commissioners and declaring an emergency. Motion to suspend second and third reading.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
Motion for adoption.
Second. Motion second for adoption. Comments from audience? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Finance and Budget, Mr. Timmer.
We have one ordinance tonight for finance and budget. The ordinance is for appropriations. It is a non-contractual appropriation totaling 36,000. It includes one project in the Public Works Department. Thank you.
All righty, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have an ordinance to amend ordinance number 158-24, titled an ordinance to make estimated appropriation for the expenses and expenditures of the city of Fairfield, Ohio during a period beginning January 1st, 2025, ending December 31st, 2025. As Mr. Timmer said, this is non-contractual appropriations. It's time I'd like to make a motion to suspend second and third reading.
Second.
Motion second for rule suspension, all in favor?
Aye.